Give me strength when I'm weary, oh my Lord. Lift me up when I fall, oh my Lord. Light a fire in my bones that an ocean cannot drown. Give me hope, give me strength until my work is done. Oh, Jesus be my vision. Oh, the passion and the fire in my soul will keep the banner flying high, the banner flying high. In the valley of shadow, oh my Lord, you will walk by our side, oh my Lord. If we love not our lives, rather die than to live. There'll be crowns, there'll be glory when the morning comes. Oh, Jesus be my vision. Oh, the passion and the fire in my soul will keep the banner flying high, the banner flying high. Those who wait on you patiently, oh my Lord. Those who trust in your word, oh my Lord. They will soar, they will fly like an eagle in the sky. They will walk, not be weary till the work is done. Oh, Jesus be my vision. Oh, the passion and the fire in my soul will keep the banner flying high, the banner flying high. For his glory's standing shoulder to shoulder, proud to bear his holy name. Sound the victory, our God is among us now. For his glory's standing shoulder to shoulder, proud to bear his holy name. Sound the victory, our God is among us now. Oh, Jesus be my vision. Oh, the passion and the fire in my soul will keep the banner flying high, the banner flying high.
Sing the song Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Naahrudayamu vinthagamare. Naahrudayamu vinthagamare. Naahrudayamu vinthagamare. Naaloyesu vachinandhuna. Naaloyesu vachinandhuna. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Teruva padenu na manolitram. Teruva padenu na manolitram. Teruva padenu na manolitram. Kristu nannu kutti nandhuna. Kristu nannu kutti nandhuna. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham. His antoshamu neekukavale. His antoshamu neekukavale na. His antoshamu neekukavale. Nedeyesu notha kuram. Nedeyesu notha kuram. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Satya Samadhane neekukavale. Satya Samadhane neekukavale na. Satya Samadhane neekukavale na. Satyundu notha kuram. Satyundesu notha kuram. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Neekukavale. Moksha bhagya mu neekukavale na. Moksha bhagya mu neekukavale. Moksha raju notha kuram. Moksha raju notha kuram. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Yesu Kristu nu nedee chedchu. Yesu Kristu nu nedee chedchu. Yesu Kristu nu nedee chedchu. Praveeshinchu nu nirdaram. Praveeshinchu nu nirdaram. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Santoshame Samadhane. Chappanashakya maina santosham. Chappanashakya maina santosham.
We have come to the last part of this meeting. Post-lunch session means it is very difficult, isn't it? I have to pray for you so that you may be awake and you have to pray for me so that I may be awake. So prayer is a good thing because nobody knows whether you are sleeping or praying. So anyhow, keep the children with you, don't allow them to move. It may be against UK rule but I am from India. Now, once again, we will read those two verses. Isaiah forty-three verse ten altogether, please. All of us, Isaiah forty-three, ten. This will be a brief message, don't worry because we want to leave you before six o'clock after, this will be only, I think around forty-five minutes at the most. Isaiah forty-three, verse ten altogether, please. You are my witnesses, said the Lord, and my servant whom I have chosen, that you may know and believe me and understand that I am he. Before me there was no God formed, neither shall there be after me. You are my witnesses. Same thing is repeated in the New Testament in the book of Acts one eight. Acts one eight, altogether once again. The book of Acts, first chapter, verse eight. But you shall receive power after that the Holy Ghost has come upon you and you shall be witnesses unto me, both in Jerusalem, in all Judea, in Samaria, and unto the uttermost parts of the earth. Shall we pray? Loving heavenly Father, we thank thee for thy continued presence right from the moment we gathered here. Thank thee for bringing thy people from far and near places, O Lord. Some of them, they are having works like other people also but they have sacrificed their time and their works also, O Lord. They have, O Lord, honoring thy presence, they have come here. Bless them in a special way, O Lord. Now, O Lord, as we are meditating thy word, once again, our humble cry is, open thou thy scriptures unto us and also simultaneously, open thou our eyes of understanding. So speak to every one of us according to our need, thou knowest our hearts. Foolish as I am, unprofitable servant, O Lord, I am standing here. Put the right word in my mouth because foolishly I may say so many things but arrest all such things. And, O Lord, what all thou hast preserved from eternity for today may be brought into our ministry with much power and authority. We are bringing all of us under the sprinkling of thy precious blood. If any person has come with any particular need, O Lord, that specific need may be attended by you and by thy grace. And, O Lord, we are claiming thy promises for this ministry, expecting readings and ascribing all glory unto thy holy name and coveting the open heaven, O Lord, for this ministry, binding the forces of darkness and also keep us free from sleep and slumber. In Jesus' precious name we pray, amen. Now, we have started this morning that the Lord has given us a command. That is, it is not a request, it is not a suggestion, it is a command. What is that command? You are my witnesses. Many times what happens in our Christian life is, if you go through the word of God, the Bible, there are many don'ts and many do's are there. As believers, we are careful about the don'ts of the Bible but we are not careful about the do's of the Bible. When we are asked to, I mean participate in the table on Sundays, when we gather around the table, when we are asked to examine our lives, generally, our trend will be, I have not done that, I have not done that, I have not lied. I have not blamed anybody, I have not attacked anybody, I have not stolen anything from anybody. I have not worshipped any idol, I am not in adultery. So not, not what God said you should not do, generally, we think of those things only. But some of the things, we will never think. What are they? The do's of the Bible. But you and I know very well, if you are doing what you should not do is sin. If you are not doing what you ought to do, equally sinful. So many times, as believers, we commit sin by not doing what we ought to do. That is a sin. I will tell you one or two examples from the Bible. Somebody can read English or anything. What you will read? One Samuel twelve twenty-three? Okay, one Samuel twelve twenty-three, somebody can read. Moreover, as for me, God forbid, I should sin against, the word sin is used, sin against the Lord. In ceasing to pray for you, what does it mean? If I won't pray for you, Samuel is telling, it is a sin. It is not a mistake, it is not an error. Sin is a very, very strong word, we all know. If it is error, okay, we can say, okay, no one then will be herring. If it is a mistake, okay, we can, but sin is a very strong word. If you won't pray for the people of God or the leaders, that is for Kingsall about it is written. Samuel is telling, if I won't pray for you, if I stop praying for you, it is, it is sin. Have you ever examined in the light of this word your life? If you won't pray for the other believers and also their leaders, it is a sin. Not only that, if you read fifteenth chapter, fifteenth chapter, verse twenty-three. One Samuel fifteen twenty-three. Ah, what is that? Rebellion is? See, as the sin of divination. Rebellion is a sin and God is equalizing that sin with divination. Going to some sorcery, assault went to the woman. Many times, many times, we may say, tell, arre, arre. Neenemi shaknal jupinsukodu potunledu. I am not going to sorceries. Karana pisachidegir kalthar, nuvvaidigalthar, nuvvai pisachve. So, karana pisachidegir kalthaledu, aad kalthaledu, ikkadi kalthaledu. So many times, we are so satisfied. But what Samuel is telling, rebellion is equal to divination. And he is putting a name for that, it is a sin. How many times we rebel against God? God says one thing, we prefer the other thing. God will not say no because right from the beginning, right from the Garden of Eden, God has given free will to man. God says, this is right and this is wrong, it is up to you to decide. Many times, many times, many people will question, ah no, why God has created that tree he should not create? Who are you to tell? Why God has allowed Adam to eat that fruit? God has not allowed, God told you very clearly, don't eat. When you want to do the wrong thing, God will tell you what is right and what is wrong. God will not compel you to do the right thing. If God compels you, you are not a human being, you are a robot. God has not created robots, God has created human beings in his image because God is not robot. So God has given you free will. But God will say, this is right, this is wrong. If God won't says that, God will be wrong. So he says, do this, don't do this. In spite of God telling you doing and blaming God, are you so intelligent? Throwing the blame on God, you do the mistake. So rebellion is equal to divination. One more thing, for example, in the book of Deuteronomy, for example, one more sin I am talking. In the book, we will not consider this as sins. Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-four, verse fourteen. You shall not oppress a hired servant? He is a hired servant who is poor and needy. You shall give him his wages on the same day, before the sun sets. Because he is poor, he is poor. Suppose if you won't pay, he may cry against you to the Lord. Guilty of, what is that sin, isn't it? Small example, from India, for example. Here, okay, you have to wash your vessels, you have to wash your teacups, all these things are there. But in India, we all know, some workers will be working in our houses, you know. You may be paying some five thousand or six thousand like that per month. Some people, they will be sweeping, some people will be cooking also or washing vessels or washing cloths and all these things. So we will put some panmanshalu, that is workers. What Majesh is telling, if you won't pay the salary on time to that worker, that is sin. Suppose monthly you have booked some person. Now, today is thirtieth. She will be having, or she or he, he will be having so many plans for that little salary what you are giving. Like you also, you are also an employee, for example. Oh, thirtieth, my boss will give me five thousand rupees. And now I have to purchase this one, my son is waiting, I have to purchase some medicines to my father. So many things, so many things. He will tell to the other people also, and first I will pay, please give me this, lend me this. On thirty-first evening, suppose if you won't pay to that person, to whom he will tell? Suppose if he asks, you may say, arre, arre, I am tired, tomorrow I will pay, you come on first or second, I will pay. Casually, we will be telling like that. You come tomorrow, I will, today I am tired. If I won't give you today, what you will do? So many things we will tell. Then what he will do? He cannot say anything because if he says anything, you will remove him from the job, isn't it? From tomorrow onwards, you need not come, you will tell. So that's why, what he will do? He will go to his house. So, dicklenivariki devude dickkanaka, vad intikeli yedustu, devudukumokkukuntada. Deva, my ajman hoodiyam marchu, change the heart of my owner, master. He has not given me money. Tomorrow I have to, I will pay, I told to so many people. What to do now? He will be with tears, he will be, because he is living on that wages. Do you know what God is telling? I will consider it as sin for you. Have you ever examined? It is sin. If it is mistake or error or something like that, those words, we can ignore. Okay, mistakes. No, sin is a very, very strong word. If you won't pay the rightful wages to your servant on time, in those days, of course, every day they were paying. So that's why it is written before sunset. It is a sin for you. Do's, what you have to do. One more thing I will tell and I will jump into the, our subject. Same, same Deuteronomy, same Deuteronomy. It is about us, chapter twenty-three. Chapter twenty-three, Deuteronomy twenty-three, verse twenty-one. Twenty-three, twenty-one. When thou shall vow a vow. Thou shall not slack. Jagrata gavunachandi, very carefully observe. For Lord thy God. Isn't it? When once you. Somebody has taken loan from us. What God is telling? God never asked you to make a vow, first of all. Suppose if you make a vow, what you have to do? You have to pay it immediately to God. If you won't pay, he will somehow, he will take that amount from you. You are a sinner. Many times, now exam season is going on. Lord, if you give me good rank in the exam, I will work in the house of God. Intlo, somebody is not well in your house. Lord, heal this boy, heal this girl, I will give that, I will give this. You need not make any vow, you can pray. But if at all you make a vow, don't delay in paying it to the Lord. Many times, okay, Lord, if I pass the exam, I will give some ten thousand rupees to the church, you will say. After you pass, you will not immediately come to the church and pray. The ten thousand rupees, you will go with your friends. God will be looking carefully. What God is telling? I will take it from you somehow. Why somehow? If you neglect with that bawarchi biryani or with that biryani from a hotel, if you won't pay the vow to God, God will give a free gift to you, that is called chembu. Tumblr he will give. After eating that, simple pendalam. To the washroom and to the bedroom, washroom and bedroom, hospital. Understand? I am talking very openly. God never asked you to make a vow. But if you make a vow, hesitant to fulfill it, first give place to God. Some people, if their salary is two thousand, Lord, this is not sufficient. Only two thousand. Only two thousand pounds out of which fifteen hundred we are giving for rent. We are not getting anything, so please, they will, they will tell to the whole church. And also in the two thousand, we have to give a minimum of two hundred, for example. Ten percent we are giving to church, in the New Testament, not ten percent, you can give twenty, thirty also, no problem. But generally, people will, so two hundred it is going like that. Fifteen hundred or thousand rent we are giving, only three hundred or four hundred. Becoming very difficult, so you will tell to the church also to pray. If you give me a higher salary, I will pay, not ten percent, Lord, fifteen percent, because the need is there, you know. Or I will pay the ten percent regularly. Some vow we will make. After hearing the prayers of the church and your own prayer, somehow God will give a job five thousand. Okay. Some five thousand. But this giving two hundred will not be increased to five hundred. Lord, you know my condition. Yes, Lord knows your condition. The first one is not well. Second one is not well. Then what we have to pray for you? Those people who prayed, church prayed, you got five thousand rupees, but you became unfaithful. Now the church has to pray, Lord, you never want your people to be unfaithful. After getting five thousand pounds, he became unfaithful, when he was getting two thousand, he is so faithful. You wanted to, you people to be faithful, so once again bring down to two thousand. That is the prayer church has to offer, because God wants you to be faithful. Isn't it? Don't invite such situation. I tell you, with all my failures in my life, I can't tell that I am a perfect saint. With all my failures in my life, God taught us to give first place to God. So many people, they will blame us, they will scandalize our name, very good, okay, let them do it. As I already told you, they are very true to their calling. So, let them do anything, somebody said, Victor is a scoundrel, Victor is an idiot, okay, true. I never said that I am a saint. So, people may do so many things, but one thing bravely we can tell. In our lives, as for me, God first, that is the secret of blessing. Brother Jabes or brother Williams, some of the people, they know how many diseases we are having. How much we eat also, they know it. Yet, always happy. Always happy. Yes, as, as long as the Lord wants to use us, he will use us. When our work is finished, the Lord will say, come on, my son, yes, happily we will go. Even now while speaking, if God calls, I am the, ah, what can I say, the more, most fortunate man. You are not fortunate, because you have to send my dead body to India. We are ready all the time, there is no problem at all. Give first place to God. Him that honoreth me, I will honor. God will not go back from his word. So if you make a vow, don't neglect to pay it to the Lord. If not, what will happen? Somehow God will take it, but it will be sin to you. Be careful. That is a sin, our point is, it is a sin. So you, you and I must be very careful, while making a vow, you must be careful. And fulfilling the vow also, you must be careful. Don't make non-practical vows to the Lord, impossible things. So like that, many times, what we have to do, we will not do, that is also a sin. The do's of the Bible. Witnessing is one of such things. If you won't witness, you are committing sin, because even in Acts one eight, when the Holy Spirit comes upon you, you shall be witnesses in Jerusalem local area, in Judea, the local district, in Samaria, the neighboring district, then the remote parts of the world. There is also so systematically, geographically, it is written, in Jerusalem, where the Holy Spirit has come. That is in your town, then in your district, in your neighboring district, then the whole world. So, there is a sequence that is written there. Many people, Anna, you are going to England, you are going to America, and you are, you are not taking us. Why should I take, you are not even a witness in your own street. Everybody, everybody come. Everybody will be telling so many things. No, be a witness in your place. Then in your nearby place, then the adjacent place, then go to the remote parts of the world. Today, people are not like that, coming to a foreign country became a fashion. And immediately after going there, they will write international speaker. So brothers and sisters, you and I are the witnesses unto the Lord. Let us be very careful, if you are not witnessing, you are committing sin, I tell boldly. Now, we have seen already, to be a witness unto the Lord, we must have testimony. What kind of testimony? It must be a personal testimony, and secondly, it must be a powerful testimony. What is personal testimony? God with you and you with, God, one-to-one relationship. You should talk to God, God should talk to you. One-to-one relationship. When you open the word of God, God will talk to you. That's why one man of God said, when you open the word, God will open his mouth. He will speak. When you pray, you will be speaking to God, in so many ways, okay? That attitude, that attitude, that prayerful attitude. Personal testimony. Then secondly, we have seen, powerful testimony. What does it mean? Others must see God with us. That speaks about your character and your behavior. I have quoted an example of Elisha, and how the Shunamite woman, great woman of Shunam, she commented. Others must see God with you. Then automatically their mouths will be shut. When they see God with you, what they can talk, you can tell me. So, third thing briefly I will tell and close. Thirdly, it must be a progressive testimony. It is not word jugglery. Personal testimony, powerful testimony, and thirdly, it must be a progressive testimony, or progressive or prosperous, whatever you call it as. What is the meaning of progressive testimony? There must be a progression in your testimony, what does it mean? You and I, we all know, one day we are going to die. Some of us may die, may die young, some of us may die old, or even at least, okay, let us say hundred years. One day we have to die, every one of us, we will leave this world, if the coming of the Lord tarries. If the Lord comes during our time, that is a different story. But if the coming of the Lord is delayed, every one of us will die, but the meaning of progressive testimony is the day when you die, your testimony should not die. When you, the day when you are buried, your testimony should not be buried. We have to leave our testimony in this world, and we have to leave the world. Even after your death, your testimony will work. Today, here, after more than three thousand five hundred years, we are talking about the testimony of Joseph. Your testimony must be like that. When you are leaving this world, you have to leave your testimony for the next generation, and you have to leave. That is the greatest property you can give to your children. Not only that, when you are buried, your testimony should not be buried with you. Leave the testimony, that is, and then what will happen? Through your testimony, see about Enoch, about Abel, such people, it is written about Abel, for example. Though Abel is not there, his blood is speaking, isn't it? Though you are not there, your testimony will speak. Some people will be encouraged, I want to be like my grandfather. He worked for God. I want to be like my father. Father is not there, but father's testimony is there. That is progressive testimony. You may not be there, but your testimony must be there. Satan wants to destroy it. Satan is compared with a lion in some of the places, your adversary is Satan, like a lion. Roaring lion. What a roaring lion will do, we all know, it will catch you, it will kill you, it will not leave there, it will tear you later. Catching, killing, tearing, so that your shape may not be seen. When once a goat, or a cow, or something is torn into pieces, you cannot detect which animal it is, that is, the enemy wants to destroy your identity. Destroy your whole testimony. First it will catch you, then kill you, it can leave you after killing, but it will, why it is compared with lion? After killing lion will not leave, that it will tear it into pieces. Your adversary Satan is after you. He want to destroy your testimony. Satan will use so many, so many agents to destroy your testimony. But you must be careful about this thought. My testimony must be there, even after I leave this world. That is very important. We all know, we will go to the book of Genesis. In the book of Genesis, we all know, the first man, Adam is there. Now, after Adam, the other people, much is not written, but by the time we come to Enoch, it is written that Enoch walked with God. Adam also walked with God in the Garden of Eden, though it is not written every day. God was coming to the Garden of Eden almost in the evening time, cool of the day, Adam and Eve. No other human beings or their children are not born to them in the Garden of Eden. Cain was also born after they came out of Eden. So God was coming, they were just moving in the Garden of Eden. Adam was also walking in the Garden of Eden. After Adam, ah, can you tell the genealogy? All computer science. Isaac is for Abraham, not Adam. Abraham will file a case against you. He is my son, not Adam. Yeah. Adam. Ah? Seth, Cain is, lion is not there. Ah? Yeah, Adam, Seth. Inosh, Cainan, Mahalaleel, Zared, Enoch, Methuselah, Lemec, Nova. Okay, Nova to Abraham? Yeah, Nova, Shem, Atpakshet, Shala, Eber, Pelig, Rehu, Serug, Nahor, Terra, Abraham. At the age of sixty-six, I am byhearting them. I am sitting and byhearting them like a L K G student. David says, keep the word of God in your heart. Tomorrow, the Bibles may not be there, your cell phones also, Bible may not, Bible that app may be removed. But keep that app in your heart. Then nobody can separate you from the word of God. You are young and very energetic, very active, you will remember so many things. This is very important, keep the word of God in your heart. It will protect you from sinning, and in the time of trouble, it will help you to win over Satan. Lord used the word of God only from Deuteronomy, three times, when Satan was tempting him. Okay. Now, much is not written about Seth or Inosh or Cainan or Mahalaleel or Zared. The seventh one from Adam is Enoch. About Enoch, it is written, he walked with God. My pure imagination of I am telling. How many years he walked with God approximately, we all know? Three sixty-five, he lived. From sixty-five onwards, it is written, at the age of sixty-five, he gave birth to Methuselah, and from that time onwards, he started walking with God till three sixty-five means, approximately three hundred years, he walked with God, and God took him away. Three hundred years, what they must be talking? I do not know. After going to heaven, let us ask Enoch. Today, let us not come to any conclusion. But what I presume is, my, my, my imagination. Yes, they were walking, maybe after a month or so, or two months, the Lord must have gone for flashback. Probably the Lord must have told Enoch, hey, Enoch, so Lord, oh, here is a flash for you, breaking news. What is that, Lord? See, Enoch was born when Adam was six twenty-two, later you can calculate, because the ages are there in the Genesis, many times you won't read them. When Adam was almost seven twenty, six twenty-two, Enoch was born. So sixty-five years if you add, that is Enoch started walking with God, when he was sixty-five means, six twenty-two plus sixty-five, six eighty-seven. And so, Adam is six eighty-seven when Enoch started walking with God. We all know Adam lived for nine thirty years. So after Enoch started walking with God, Adam lived approximately another two fifty or more years. Now, as they were walking, as they were walking, one day, I think, the Lord must have told Enoch, I, hey, Enoch, I was walking with Adam also like that, almost six hundred years ago. Six eighty, seventy years ago, or six ninety, let us say. Lord, you were walking with Adam? Ah, Adam, he is still alive? Why you stopped walking with him, why you started with me? Is it a general question, welcome? The Lord is telling, I was walking with Adam six ninety years ago, in the Garden of Eden. But today I started walking with you, means? Enoch must have questioned, Adam is still alive? He is there living. My great, 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 great grandfather, my Adam. He is still living. Why you stopped walking with him? With much fear. Adagala vada, adagala vada. Shall I ask her not? Shall I ask her not? I believe, because that anxiety will come. Suppose Adam is dead, that is a different story, but Adam is still alive. Then what I feel is, no one then, God is the father and we are the children, he will be playing with us. Now, what I feel is, the Lord must have told Inuk, when Inuk asked, why you stopped walking with Adam? Then God must have answered, according to my imagination. You are telling Adam is alive, go and ask him only. Adam is alive. You go and ask him. Yes, that is a good thing. Instead of asking God, better to ask Adam, isn't it? Inuk may be thinking. If God leaves us quickly, how nice it will be. I want to go to Adam and I want to ask Adam, why, why he stopped walking with God? So God knows our heart, you know? God has seen the desire in the heart of Inuk. And God said, Inuk, Inuk, my. So, we will come later, I will come later. Hammaaya, okay Lord, okay Lord, because God knows what is happening in the heart of Inuk. So the Lord left for heaven. Then immediately, this man is young, because he is around sixty-five, sixty-seven like that. Immediately he ran to Adam. Adam may be sitting somewhere. He is the only, the oldest man, the first man, you know? He is six hundred and eighty-seven, six eighty-eight, six ninety years of age. He may be doing something sitting like that, because all the children on the earth are his children, only, only one family. So, by seeing Inuk, because news will spread, you know? Some people must have already informed Adam, Inuk is walking with God, God is coming regularly to Inuk. We were asking, Inuk, kida jare, boli tam, prabhu se, paidal janae ka jare? Walking for walking, I am going. So daily he is going, so the news must have come to Adam, because the world was so small. When Inuk was coming, Adam sah. Hare, after a long time you are coming to me, what is the matter? Then Inuk must have said, this is all my imagination. Inuk must have said, Tata, grandpa, nowadays I am walking with God. So Adam must have said. It's a very good thing, you are walking with God. Very nice. Okay. Then, Inuk must have said to Adam. As we were walking. And the Lord remembered you, reminded about you. There was little bit tension in the heart of Adam, because he knew what has happened. Hare, the Lord remembered me, reminded me. Yes, yes, he reminded you. What he told about me, what he told about me? Yeah, it seems God was walking with you in the Garden of Eden. Yes, yes. Has he said that much only or has he said anything more? Then I asked, Tata, grandpa, I asked him, Lord, Adam is still alive, our grandpa? Why you stopped walking with him? I asked him. See you, when God said, you must be silent, don't ask questions like that. And why you want to inquire about me if you got anything, you come to me? Why you asked God? Why you stopped what, I mean, walking with him when I asked? What he told, what he told. Anxiety is increasing, BP is increasing to Adam. What he told? He asked me to ask you only? He asked me to ask? So Inuk told Adam, God asked me to ask you only? Hammaaya, then, you want the answer for that, why God stopped wa- walking with me? Yes, Tata, I want the answer. Then Adam said. Not me. A old lady is sitting under the tree, call her, she will tell in detail, this is the reason. Hawaka. Call that old lady here, she will tell in detail. God asked me to ask you, Tata, no, 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 my, much boy, and I, I think, much boy. And he called you. I will stop here. Because it will become more big story. And you know, Eve and Adam together, they must have said to Inuk, all the story. Hare, Inuk, you do one thing. Whatever God says, obey. If you disobey, the fellowship will be broken. That is what we have done. I made the whole story short because you are. Okay, now, I don't want to spoil your sleep. So, both of them together, Adam and Eve, must have told Inuk, whatever God says, you obey. Never, never say no, never disobey. If you disobey, that day, your fellowship will be broken. Three hundred years continuously, Inuk walked with God means he never disobeyed God. How he learnt it? From the testimony of Adam. Adam's testimony helped Inuk. If not as a human being, if he doesn't know that particular sin of disobedience, he also must have disobeyed one or two times, whenever he wanted to disobey. Immediately Adam and Eve were coming to his mind, no, 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 I should not disobey. The Lord will stop walking with me. The experience, the testimony of Adam was a great help to Inuk. Because he never disobeyed, ultimately the Lord took him. What a wonderful thing, progressive testimony. Your testimony must help the next generation. Undoubtedly, what I believe is, Methuselah, the son of Inuk, whatever Inuk is experiencing with God, he may be telling his, to his children, especially the eldest child, the first child, Methuselah. Methuselah learnt the truth, how to please God. That's why Methuselah is the long-lived person on the earth. We all know nine sixty-nine. Nine sixty-nine years. When you honor your father and mother, the commandment says you will have long life. He had long life means he obeyed whatever Inuk said. That is the conclusion we can draw. So whatever God is talking to Inuk, Inuk was sharing with Methuselah, Methuselah was blessed. So now you see, Adam's testimony was of great help to. Inuk. Inuk's testimony was of great help to Methuselah. After Methuselah, Methuselah had Lemac, much is not written about Lemac, but Lemac's son is Nova. Methuselah lived nine, nine, uh, nine hundred and sixty-nine years. Then when we come to Nova, Methuselah, actually Methuselah died just a few days before the Nova's flood. That is, Nova's flood has taken place after the creation of Adam, one, six, five, six years. Sixteen hundred and fifty-six years after the creation of Adam, the Nova's flood took place and at that time, Methuselah was nine sixty-nine and Nova was six hundred. Nova's age was six hundred at that time. You can read the book of Genesis. So in other words, six hundred years, Methuselah and Nova was together. So what all, Adam's experience helped Inuk? The experience of Adam and Inuk helped Methuselah? The experience of Adam, Inuk and Methuselah helped Nova? And it is written in the Bible, Nova walked with God. Progressive testimony. After Nova, we all know Shem was there. And Shem was also there at the time of building the ark, all the three sons. Then, undoubtedly what God was telling to Nova in building that ark, that ship, he was sharing with his only three sons, because all the other are wicked at that time, that's why all were perished. Three sons are okay, so he may be sharing and those three sons may be helping Nova in building an ark and all other responsibilities. That is totally a separated family, a family who was walking with God. When Nova was five hundred years of age, Shem was born. Nova lived nine fifty years, we all know, all these things are in the book of Genesis. So they were together for almost four hundred and fifty years. At the age of five hundred, he was born. Nine fifty, he died means, four fifty years they were together. And at the time of the flood, that is, when all died, Nova was six hundred means, Shem was around hundred years at that time. In the Bible, it is written ninety-eight plus. So what all Nova learnt, it was of great help to Shem. How God speaks, how to walk with God. Now to make the whole story short, because time is already, five forty, we are still in the Garden of Eden. I'll close in, uh, five to ten minutes at the most. Okay? Alright. Next time. If at all you are alive, I am alive, these are alive. Yeah, yeah. Maximum five to six minutes, okay? It's a good news? Yeah, ah, everybody is a, I am able to see all the thirty-two teeth. I never, that's why they also sang. Oh ho. Right. Now, again we have seen from Nova to Abraham, leather, Shem to Abraham, another ten generations, already we told them. Those ten names, if you later, if you calculate, when Abraham was born, though ten generations, Shem is still alive. After Abraham was born, it is not written in the Bible, the Jewish history says. We all know at the age of seventy-five, the Lord met Abraham, as per Genesis twelve four, he accepted God as his own God. He accepted the Lord, Lord Jehovah, as his own God at the age of seventy-five. At that time, the Lord made a covenant with Abraham, that is Genesis chapter twelve, one, two, three, and his age was seventy-five, that is verse four. Jewish history says, by the time we come to the days of Abraham, the whole world was full of idolatry. Because of Nimrod, who is from Ham. Abraham's father, Terra, was the manufacturer of idols. And Abraham, he was helping his father, he was also manufacturing idols. So they were manufacturing those idols in those days, then they were selling, that was their life, there are so many, so many things are there. Because I promised you five minutes, ten minutes. So now, they were selling those idols and they were living. Of course, they were quite rich also. Now what has happened is, the history says, one day Abraham had a problem. Abraham was worshiping the sun god in those days. Because that's why if you go to the Islamic country, especially, Abraham is native of Iraq. We all know Mesopotamia in between Tigris and Euphrates, that delta region is Mesopotamia, where who is there, is native. So, he was worshiping, that's why in all the Islamic flags, you can see the stars and moon and all these things will be there. They were worshiping stars and moon and all this sun and other sun god. So Abraham was, the history says Abraham was worshiping sun god. One day he had a problem during the night time, some problem, we do not know what it is. Whenever problem comes, generally we want to pray to our God, he also wanted to pray his sun god, he came out of his tent and he searched for God, sun is not seen, because it is night time. Then Abraham had a thought, is the sun true God? When I am in need, where is he? He is not seen. God means almost, always he must be available, whether it is day or night. So nighttime, only moon is there, no sun is there, where is my God? I am troubling, what will happen to me? Then he got a question, is sun truly God or not? Because he is not seen. God is also, is he doing part-time duty? He is not seen, so what to do? Who will tell him? His father cannot tell, because his father is an idol worshiper. Terra, Nahor, as I told you, again a fresh generation started from Shem, Hamans of faith, isn't it, from Nova? Earlier Adam to Nova all died. So the oldest man on the earth alive was Shem. During the days of Abra, are you understanding now? The oldest man that was living on the earth was Shem. So let me go to him. I got a doubt, is sun God or not? All these days, am I wasting my time worshiping who is not God? Because in my need, he is not seen. The history says, he has gone to Shem. Shem was around four hundred and twenty-five or four fifty like that at that time. At the age of seventy-five, this man went to, Abraham went to Shem and asked this direct question, what is that? Shem, grandpa, you are the oldest man that is living on the earth. And everything started from you only, as it started from Adam, with your father Nova, it started. Anyhow, Nova is not there, you are there. Is the sun true God? This is the direct question, Abraham asked Shem. Shem knew very well who is the true God, because that God only asked his father to prepare the ark and that God only told very clearly, and these people may be. And that God only told very clearly, and these people may be helping their father. Immediately as an objective type answer, Shem told, sun is not God, there is a God. That God only during the days of my father brought all this flood, heaven from rain from heaven, earth opened its mouth. And at that time, I was also hundred years, Shem was hundred approximately. I know, I know, sun is not God, there is a God who brings the rain, who removes the people. Today you and I are alive means because of that God. This man is having devotion, Abraham, but devotion towards idols. The wrong God. Then immediately, the history says Abraham asked Shem. My question is solved. Sun is not God, then who is true God? Shem must have told, the Lord Jehovah is the true God. And then. Abraham asked, will he appear unto me? Because I am having so much devotion, I love God, all these days I worshipped the wrong God. I thought that the sun is God, but you are telling sun is not God, he is a part of creation, but he is not the creator. Will that God appear to me? Then Shem said. If you obey everything without questioning, then only that God will appear, he will appear to the obedient people. You must say yes, whether you understand it or not to his word, then he will appear. I, as I already told you, Abraham is a man of devotion, yes, I want to know, that quest was there in his heart. Immediately said, whatever he says, I will obey, I don't question. Then Shem said, yes my son, he will appear to you, you pray. Abraham went to his own place, started praying, Lord, Lord, you appear unto me. I came to know that so and so is not God. You are true God, Shem told me. Shem's testimony helped Abraham. When he started praying, the Lord appeared. That's what Stephen says in his testimony, the God of glory appeared unto our forefather Abraham. Because he prayed, Lord, you appear unto me, he prayed. The experience, the testimony of Shem, it helped Abraham to believe in the true God. That is the reason why. When God said, leave your country and kids and your family and go to a place which I am going to show you, he said yes. He never asked what is that place I have to go. Not knowing where he has to go, he started, why? Shem said, don't ask anything, you just obey. If you ask to go to someplace, he will lead you. Don't ask Lord, which place I have to go, shall I go to America or England, don't ask. That's why Abraham has not asked anything, implicitly obeyed. That is what the Hebrew writer writes, not knowing where he was going. Nobody will start their journey like that, isn't it? Everybody, everybody, somebody is there outside, the door. So everybody, everybody, what they will do? They will be asking where I have to go, what is my goal? But not knowing where to go, he started his journey. Why? Shem said, don't ask any question. So what I want to tell is, the testimony and experience of Shem helped Abraham. From Abraham, we all know how Isaac and Jacob and Judah and all the things have come till our day. Their testimony is not dead, their testimony is a progressive testimony. Adam, Inuk, Methuselah, Nova, Shem, Abraham, to till today. So what type of testimony we must have? It must be a personal testimony? It must be a powerful testimony? Such people who are having such a testimony, wherever they put their leg, it is a blessing. Because God will be with them. Wherever they put their leg, it is a great blessing, God will come to that house with them. Yes, God went with Joseph to Photefer's house, Photefer is not a believer, unbelievers also will be blessed. Jacob went to Laban's house, God blessed Laban thirty, thirty of Genesis. From the day you came, before that I was having little, from that day it increased. I observed it, Laban is telling, Laban is not a believer, Laban is an idol worshiper, he is a Syrian. That's why from those idols only, amma manakkha, rahelakkha, arinadeskum. Isn't it? Rachel also brought one or two idols from his father because they are having idols. But because of Jacob, God blessed Laban. Such person, that is what God said to Abraham, I will bless you, not only that you will be a blessing. If you are a child of God, not only you will enjoy the blessings of God, wherever you put your foot, God will bless that place also. May God make your life and my life like that, for that you have to sacrifice. You must have that dedication. May God help you to have a personal testimony, a powerful testimony and a progressive testimony. Let us pray. Come. Come, you, you come and pray, Jabes.
So let us kneel down. As Lord spoke into us all day today, so time has come to examine our hearts as we moving forward in our life, what kind of testimony we have. Let us take few minutes in silence. We obeying God, as Anna said, we lost our relationship with the Lord because we disobeyed. Let us examine.